Roll call, Brian.
Here.
Krieh.
Here.
Tyler.
There's.
Okay, number two, approval of minutes from previous meetings. Do you have meetings or just meetings?
It seemed like we had meetings, it was a long one, so it could have been more than one.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from previous meetings.
Oh, second that.
Hello?
Aye.
Krieh.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
All right. Number three, claims and payroll, and I guess we have one claim, number two, four, four, one, three, for serendipity, we're gonna vote separately on, so Kareen cannot abstain from the vote, so the first vote will be for the claims and payroll, outstanding two, four, four, one, three.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
No, second.
Okay, Tyler.
Aye.
Kareen.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Okay, now we'll do a vote on the claim, number two, four, four, one, three, for fifty dollars for serendipity.
I'll make a motion to approve two, two, four, one, three.
For those, for those President Wesper Andrews graduation.
Brian.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Kareen, abstaining, Tyler.
Aye.
Okay. Reports. Mayor report.
Good evening, um, sounds like Thursday, May eleventh, when Biden declares the pandemic over, some things will change for us, um, we have a meeting that we'll listen to on Thursday, or Pam's gonna be listening for me, um, due to, I'm gone for a few days now, we won't change anything in the building until I get back, because if state would walk in while I'm gone, we have to be following the policies, so hopefully in the near future, some more positives for the facility, um, I know one thing is we won't have to test anymore for those non-vaccinated, um, it looks like we can make policies and procedures to wear masks, not to wear masks more frequently, or less based on what's going on, the county has been in blue the last couple of days, but there has been several outbreaks in a lot of facilities too, so, um, I know we're ready to get rid of them, and the residents are ready to get rid of them, so we'll see what next week brings, uh, we're still working on health insurance, um, issues there, the board has tabled it and brought up more discussion, I've visited with Jeremy, I have also visited with Josh Sheerick, they would like my agent to come out, so we're working on just figuring out what's best for an employee benefit there, um, we do have a lot of help wanted, and we have a few, um, additional, uh, positions that are coming open, um, this last week, which is unfortunate, so we got some major work to get done, uh, in regards to that, the Board of Directors has had a couple of special meetings, um, trying to go over employee surveys, uh, what comments were made, different things like that, we have done some more wage increases, um, trying to figure out what we need to do there, and next week, Thursday, I think we're having another, uh, meeting, um, to kind of go over those details, nursing home week is next week for us, um, a lot of fun, different events taking place, uh, starts out on Tuesday, Wednesday the seventeenth, that seventeenth, we're having our, our drive-by, the residents will all be outside, people can get on their horses, bikes, um, side-by-sides drive-by, we'll have a hot dog feed for a free will donation, um, I'll be grilling out for the staff on Friday, we're ordering Mary's Chicken on Tuesday for all the residents and staff, quilt show by the foundation, um, later in the week, um, and then the staff will be getting this year, gift certificates to Cool Beans for a gift for that week, um, the board also voted on, um, last year was the first year they did a scholarship, um, we didn't have any candidates apply last year, we had two candidates apply this year, and, um, those awards will be given out on honors night by Kim Walken.
Can you just explain a little bit how the board, um, choose, chose to give scholarships, how that came about?
Um, two, two or three years ago, we thought maybe a drawing card for some of our high school students to possibly work for the facility, um, there is a couple of rules, including you have to, you have to work, um, at least a minimum of eight hours, six, eight hours a week, but they also felt there's a lot of employees that give a lot of time away from their children when they're working there, so there's two separate scholarships, one for an employee themselves, if they work for us, that one's at five hundred dollars, and then we have an employee's child, um, or children scholarship at two hundred and fifty, again, you have to work a hundred and fifty hours in the last six months from the time the application was due, so it went back October fifteenth to April fifteenth, um, and then there's a couple of questions on there that the candidates had to answer, and then turn back in, and then they went over them.
And how do you think your CNN classes, Dr. Mike, have you?
Well, we did not have enough to teach it, unfortunately, um, we had a lot of inquiries and things like that, but we had to have five, so we had to go to Plan F, and Plan F is, I'm working through the state of Nebraska, and we can still teach it, they wanted me to give them thirty-day notice, um, I said, I really need to start this on the seventeenth, like we were, we have a couple of high school students that got out, um, and then a, uh, semi-retired individual in town, and we want and need them to start as soon as possible, um, so they're working eagerly at the state to get that class, uh, approved, how we're going to teach it, and if that gets approved, then we'll change our hours, we can do it, um, I've already talked to Pam at Melbourne, who's gonna be the instructor, and we'll do it more, starting maybe two o'clock in the afternoon, and run to eight o'clock or nine at night, based on what the class is willing to do for us, otherwise, we had some early evenings and a Saturday or a Sunday lined up to get that seventy-six hours in, but it was unfortunate that we did not have enough, and association would not let us teach unless we have five, there is an expense there that they are paying, they would have paid the instructor otherwise, so, but there is another avenue, so hopefully.
Do you think it would ever work, do you lean to have the mayor pay for the class?
We are, um, the Board of Directors, when they met the last meeting, um, there were a couple of people said, it, it's a struggle, that class was gonna cost almost four hundred ninety-five dollars because of books and, but you didn't have to drive, except to Plainview, um, so there was, all the testing fees were included in that, um, otherwise, it ranges a high threes to four hundred dollars, depending upon where you're going to take it through the northeast, or I send a lot to O'Neil, so the board asked for candidates to write a letter for some type of commitment, hopefully, um, and they approved all three, so.
Can you, uh, combine other nursing homes, or can only just be for Plainview?
Nope, didn't combine anybody, that's why we had it advertised in the Norfolk paper and, and Plainview, and we had people call, it just sometimes didn't work out in their schedule, or I know one's gonna take it when they attend college, I'm sure that it's gonna be taken care of payment-wise that way. So we are des- desperately looking for some RNs and CNAs right now.
I'm retired.
Why?
Come out, we're down.
That'd be awesome.
Anything else for me?
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Okay, on to the police chief.
I'm cranky. How many times you gonna say tonight?
As many times as it takes for you to understand, Karen. Lord.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, thanks for your comment, you can have a seat now, all right, so this'll be short and sweet, uh, study month, couple arrests, couple burglaries, Ted was gonna put out a press release, however, I don't think the newspaper got that, um, but the people that did break into the homes were, um, arrested, and they're sitting in jail right now, so that's a good thing, um, I have, I talked to Adam Smith, and I've been talking to Jeremy, I've been corresponding Kyle, right, um, regarding the nuisance stuff that we have, and Bob, I've been meaning to get that email to you, and I just haven't, so forgive me for that, we'll get it to you.
We're gonna get busy with that here.
Uh, yeah, we are, I got a call from Val Grimes, she's the city planner for Norfolk, she will break it down as, to the point where we can understand every, the ins and outs of how we need to do this, or how Norfolk does it, so you guys understand, there's a, there's a set of codes, it's called the International Property Maintenance Code, that I had talked to Adam last September regarding that property on Forest Street that I wanted to condemn, I needed to come down, because it's like four inches off the foundation, well, um, moving forward with it, I think we got the resolution, it's been so long I can't remember, however, Luke was like, I'm on the fence with that, I don't think we'll win, we'll win in court, so I called Adam, sent him pictures of the property, he's like, absolutely, that needs to come down, so he brought up the IPMC, the International Property Maintenance Code, it's a book that we're gonna need to purchase, I don't know how much it costs, but we gotta get it, anyway, what it allows us to do is call him, or get in contact with him, he can come up, and he can look at the properties that we want to come condemn, or even nuisance properties, and he'll say, yeah, absolutely, hundred percent, and he will type up a, an official inspection report, and then we'll give it to Kyle, and Kyle can probably, I'm not gonna speak for him, because I don't know, he can probably discuss that more with you and explain to you better where we go with that, but there's placards that come along with it, that I can post up on that, the properties, a red, yellow, along with a condemnation letter, interordnance and photos, um, if we get this set in place and we move forward with it, once we post those placards on the house, the owner can't do anything with it, if he doesn't, he's, he, I, criminal charges can be brought against him, um, Ca- or Adam did tell me that there's another, it's called the International Code Council, that's a, a group of folks that you've got, uh, electrical, uh, plumbing, they're experts on that, if we need somebody to come in and take a look at that, that's who we go through, um, Ca- uh, Adam can't do that, because he's not an expert in those areas, but he can come in as an expert on, like, um, housing, like, taking a look at a house and saying, yeah, that's, that's a problem, so, um, I'm gonna call Val Grimes tomorrow, see what she wants to, you know, discuss with me, and then I'll, I'll let you know, and we can move forward with Kyle too, so that's kind of what we've been working on, I got, I have a copy of the interlocal agreement that Adam uses with Norfolk, and I forwarded that to Kyle as well, so we can move forward with that, um, I don't have anything else, if you guys have any questions, just go ahead and throw them at me.
I would just say thank you for hosting Andrew's party.
Absolutely, yep, I think so too. Um, you guys, if there's anything that you see that we might be missing, or we need to address, gosh.
Oh, we'll tell ya.
I'm sure you will. And you wonder why I'm cranky.
Someone will tell you.
Someone will tell me, so just let me know, please, okay, so.
How's your time been so far?
Been great, been getting out there on the streets, meeting with people, meeting with all the businesses, and introducing myself, so the public knows who I am.
They'll know who you are in that police car, just, that time, that will come, I need them on the street patrolling, so.
Yeah, that's good.
Told them, that's fine, go ahead and say hi, but I need you out there, get to know the town, so, good.
That's good.
Got a park, he issued a parking ticket tonight, I was so proud. So, yay, baby steps, baby steps, so.
Great.
Okay, anything?
Thanks.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Economic development, I don't see Susan, so let's get that, city superintendent report. Jeremy, you got it?
Uh, yeah, uh, what Kurt put down, um, we ground curbs in town, uh, we had about ten curbs to ground with the city, and then other people that needed them around, so we'll be rebuilding those out, went well, um, we did get the bid closed, May third, for the, uh, our big iron, so the backhoe brought sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, the semi-truck bought eighty-two hundred dollars, the Tahoe brought sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, and the street sweeper brought thirty-four hundred, so it's definitely above my expectations.
Pretty big, yeah.
Um, after their fees and everything, we came up with a little over thirty-eight thousand that we get to keep, so I was pretty happy with that, I was kinda surprised if someone brought, so, um, leak investigators did finish up seams here this last week in the pool, uh, we're gonna have to paint it yet coming forward, and we're working with Christianson Construction to fix the floats and new media for the filters in the pool, so, other than that, um, the house, like I said, will be done by clown days, so.
And you got electric boxes that are gonna get to.
Yep, uh, I went and purchased electric boxes, so we can have go, and Jake picked them up today, so we should be working on, and then we'll work with the REA, they're gonna put new transformer and string triplex in there, so, they said that'll also be done for clown days.
Are you guys doing the RV dump, Jeremy, or you're?
Um, we'll see, it probably won't be done till later in the summer, we'll probably see how busy we are, we might have to hire somebody out, so we'll, we'll do the water and sewer, obviously, but the concrete stuff, we'll see where, where we're at for that big old pool, so, the curb, if you guys noticed, the curb's cut for that already, so, we cut eighty-some feet over there for it.
Do you have a question? Do you have a question? Are you breathing, or do you have a question?
So we need eye contact, who is that?
Stop.
She's also having a bad day.
I guess I made you cranky, did I mention that she's crazy? Sorry. I thought it went like this, I can't understand.
Moving on to city attorney report.
Okay, we can do this from right here, always have, huh? You know, we talked last month about I was planning to resign, and I agreed I would do that, we had the, in the report, and in the minutes, that I would continue on as a consultant, I think Courtney kind of inferred in talking to Bob that that was a decision of the council, I don't think my report is a decision of the council, so you guys decide for yourselves what you wanna vote on in the future, as far as hiring a special city attorney to talk about Colby, or something like that, but so far as Colby goes, uh, you all know I take it that it's put off till the next month, I think it unlikely that I would need to be at that meeting, but we'll talk about it ahead of the meeting, it's just a matter of whether you guys are happy with Colby's reports, or happy enough that you can bite your tongue and pass their stuff, but if you're not, you'll have to scold them and send them to try again, I suppose.
Did he say when that was gonna come, Bruce?
What?
Did he say when that was gonna come?
Well, I think a bunch of it is here, they've sent you guys some stuff, haven't they, the electrical report?
It was just the update, I think, on the parking spots.
Yeah, the parking, and there's nothing on track.
In the email I got, which I might, might have, you said it was gonna come this week or next week, so I don't know.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, well, I have nothing else.
He said it would be this week, but I haven't seen anything, so.
You know, I, I had kind of understood you had some down at the office about the lighting or something like that.
I think just the one that you gave me, Bruce.
The, it's the one that you emailed everyone back in?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, well, in any event, we'll review all that before the meeting, or somebody will, and decide if it's clean enough to vote on or not.
I told him I wanted it all together, so people could look at it, he wanted to enforce it on this meeting, and I said, no, we're not gonna do that, because that's too much of a rush.
And otherwise, in the future, I will only work on city business if the mayor calls me and tells me to do that.
Yeah.
But, uh, that's really not the same as the council voting to approve that plan, so you guys do that if and when you wish, uh, beyond the report, yeah, I'm good with proceeding with the announcement effective immediately, I will resign from my appointed duties as general counsel and city attorney, uh, thirty seconds of history, if you will, I told the mayor I wanted a chance to make a speech, and I have some notes. Without looking very far back, most of you know, but I started doing this in seventy-seven, so that's about forty-five years, and if you look back into the minutes over all the different mayors and administrators and folks that have worked here, it's a, an interesting group of people to have deal, to dealt with over the years, a lot of different personalities, but we managed to muddle through as it went along, if you do the math, it's somewhere north of six hundred city meetings, I would wager to say that if you added up all the city officials currently in the room, you couldn't make six hundred city meetings, that might be interesting, uh, just two other thoughts, the, the open meeting law and the being cautious about deciding things in advance of meetings, you really do need to be careful, Christie gave me a good opportunity for a lead in there, somehow she's gotten the inference that Kyle Peterson may be going to be the city attorney, now, we couldn't have had a decision in advance of the city meeting, voting on that, could we? I mean, this is, this is open meeting law stuff that you do have to be damn careful about, and otherwise, I was going to encourage you to work harder on nuisances, drugs and dangerous dogs, well, she's already mentioned you have other plans to go further on nuisances, I would question a little bit this national code business, but if you have a consultant, well, so be it, consult the way, but, uh, you know, if you don't solve the nuisance and the drugs and the dangerous dogs, the town rather goes to crap, so those are big topics to stay on, uh, my other two hundred pages here, if you want me to read them, I could.
Yeah, sure.
But, uh, otherwise, I could call it a wrap, and you can go ahead with the meeting, I, I just wanna thank everybody that dealt with me over the years for cooperation and assistance, and with that, I'll say I'm officially done.
Thank you.
Bruce, if you wanna come up, we got a little presentation for you.
Okay.
Brooke, do you have the dukes?
Yes.
No, they're my evidence.
We're working on the. Bruce was talking about.
You wanna, you wanna give him a clown festival poster, or the?
He could have both.
He could have one, be.
He could have both. I swear to God, if you kidnits about this, because your math is bad, isn't it?
Maybe you came up with something different.
I can get that one, my math's bad.
On behalf of the city, Bruce.
I'm pretty sure.
Are you with this plaque?
Yay.
Group picture.
Oh, good. We should have been worn previous to this.
Oh, really? Why, what are you gonna change?
I might.
You trying to make her grumpy?
I already did that.
I think Jody was on the edge, she dressed for.
Good job, you made the inference that this was happening. Excuse me, Bruce, sorry. I thought we were gonna have cake, where is it?
I ate it.
Well, once you got cranky on the way here, you ate it.
I am a cake monster.
Well, thank you for the plaque, I could stay, but then I would comment on everything you do, so I think I'll just kinda quietly get out the back of the room and stay out of the way.
You have that right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We look forward to your future comments.
Thank you for your stripes.
The same open meeting law question, somebody telegraphed to Kyle that he should be here tonight.
Okay, moving on to number five, mayor appointments, library board on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, Nancy Naverstack.
You want something said after that?
Motion?
I make a motion to approve Nancy Naverstack to the library board through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second it.
Good. Tyler.
Aye.
Kareen.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Pool board through December twenty twenty-four, Anne Spula.
Can you tell me who that is?
She's a parent at the school.
Her, Trent works at the ethanol plant.
Okay, okay.
Looking for a motion?
I'll make a.
I'll second.
All right, Brian.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Kareen.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
And moving on to city attorney, Kyle Peterson, and just a word on Kyle, um, his two options that the council can vote on for, uh, fees, the first is eight hundred dollar flat fee per month, with litigation separately at hourly rate, and the second option is just bill hourly rate at two hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour, so whatever the council wishes to do for the payment options.
If we, can I ask you a question? If we approve you, what does most cities, um, kinda do, or is it a toss-up, different size of towns?
Yeah, um, most of the villages, I just do on a, a flat fee, because there, there really isn't much that I have to do for them, but, um, for the cities, it's kinda different, um, Newman Grove, they just pay me on an hourly basis, and they usually don't want me at the meetings, so that don't add to that amount, um, uh, but that's why I just presented those options, I think that's kinda in line of what our office does with, uh, Fullerton, um, that's Katie Sharp, though, who covers that, so, I, that's why I just thought I'd present the options and then.
So you're driving from Albion?
No, I live in Tilden.
Tilden, so you're still driving?
Correct.
Do you have to pay mileage, do we have to pay mileage, is this part of the eight hundred?
You know, I, I probably should do that, but when I go to Newman Grove, I only charge them for when I'm there, so, not when I'm in my car.
So, and that's another option with Kyle, um, the council wishes to have him come to every meeting, or we could just have him come when?
Sometimes we get into trouble.
When needed.
Some of us get into trouble.
If he's willing to come, if that's what the council chooses to have him do, so.
Well, Los Angeles Blizzard, you know, I wouldn't think he'd have to, then, you like us, don't ya?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I was gonna say, though, um, if, if you guys can, uh, beat Clearwater's time of adjourning at eleven fifteen last night, I'd really appreciate it tonight.
I seen there are agenda.
Done, we'll be.
We better, I'll be real cranky.
We'll show you how it's done tonight.
Okay.
We'll prove it to you.
So, will you have any office per se in this town, or you just work through the library, or what?
Uh, no, our offices, uh, so, it's Jeff Jurecki, Katie Sharp and I, um, most of the time, Jeff Jurecki and Katie Sharp are in Albion, and then we all kinda take turns going to Columbus, my primary office is in Tilden, so, uh, we have a, a gentleman hired who's taking the bar exam right now, and then, you know, once he gets more acquainted with Columbus, maybe there might be us, uh, looking at different satellites to open up, but until we get someone else in in Columbus, that's where I'm kinda spending my time, is Tilden most of the time, and then Columbus one or two days a week.
Yeah, he's just a phone call away, really?
I will say, anything we've ever did, even back when he was here, working with Bruce, he responds.
Oh, yes.
Very quickly and promptly, so.
Good, because that's probably the first thing you should learn.
No, I appreciate that, your correspondence back and forth with me has been amazing, so thank you for that.
Okay.
I've been waiting months for other stuff, and still haven't received it, so thank you.
All the technology in the world, so learn it, thank you.
Okay.
What does the council wish to do, looking for a motion?
Well, I have one other question, do we give him a raise, or how does that work? Sometime?
Give him a raise?
Yeah.
You're already that good.
I'll take it, but, uh, at least, um, what I've done traditionally with Miss Fatalities is, you know, what I agree to do, that's, that's what I do, and then, you know, if I need to increase it, I'll let you know.
Plus a living, it makes no difference to you, huh?
You don't need renegotiate if the time comes and need be.
So like if a flat fee wasn't enough going down the road, or he finds out, you call him every other day?
Well, I'm just saying, at four hundred and fifty dollars a month, extra to work with, interesting.
Okay, so looking for a motion?
I move that we hire Kyle Peterson, eight hundred dollars a month with, with litigation at hourly fees, is that correct?
That's correct.
Second?
I'll second that.
Hey, Tyler.
Aye.
Kareen.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Okay, welcome to work, though. You can have a chair if you want.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number six, discussion, action, resolution number six seventeen.
You forgot.
Oh, sorry about that, PCED board representatives, Jeremy Tar, alternate Bob Smith.
Who is that?
Uh, this is our Pierce County Economic Development Board, uh, we just went through our interlocal agreement and freshened up on it, and we're supposed to have an actual appointment from each community to who is their representative and alternate, so Bob and I currently already go, but there hasn't been an actual, uh, I guess, motion made for probably in a long time, at least not on their books, so it's just making official.
There's two from Plainview.
Unless somebody else wants to go.
So is there two from Plainview, two from Altman, two from Pierce?
Hater, and then the, and then the county commissioners get, uh, so essentially, there's a, there's a vote for every community, and then the county, the commissioners get a vote.
Okay.
And then, yeah, you only get one vote, even though one's a rep, one's an alternate, you only get one vote per community.
So you two have to work together to get your vote the way you want it, if you're both at the meeting?
Yeah, I just do whatever Bob tells me.
That sounds like a good plan.
I let him vote, though.
You meet at the courthouse, yes?
It rotates.
No, it rotates.
We rotate towns.
Yep, we'll go, we usually go, you know, over lunch, um, we usually over lunch once, usually every third Thursday in the month, and we'll rotate between every community, except for Hater, because there's not really anything to eat, and then, um, uh, every, once a year, we'll have a night meeting where it's our car planning one in January, so.
You both wanna be on it, continuing?
Sure, we are.
If you want to, I'm not gonna hold you back.
No, I just wanna make sure you know what you're doing.
I'll tell you one thing.
What? What?
It bothers me about it.
What?
Since I became mayor, I'm gonna gain weight because every meeting it goes to the eight.
Maybe they'll walk you around the town.
Yeah, we're, we're good.
I make a motion to approve uh, P C E D board representative Jeremy Tar, alternate Bob Smith.
Second.
I'll say my motion.
Okay, Tyler.
Aye.
Karine.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Okay, now moving on to number six, discussion action, resolution number six seven two. Appointment to N M P P Members Council and ACE Board of Directors.
Uh, so this got brought up, so we are, I'm already the representative for N M P P, ACE and MEAN. Bob was got on as MEAN as well and we, so we go to all the meetings together, very much we can, and we found out that for ACE and N M P P, it's set up where our superintendent is what it says, say superintendent. So they actually have Kurt in there, even though Bob's the one that goes, once he goes the other way, so that's fine and they act, I don't know if they even, are they even on the difference, but um, so this will just put it as a uniform mayor and then city administrator, so if something happens to me or Bob, you don't have to keep re-voting every time, whoever takes over the next mayor, myself, just fills into that, that position, so. Unless you guys choose down the road, you want a different position, you put in there, so.
I will say too, going to these meetings is really interesting because, you know, communities need to be involved with this stuff, just to keep up with what's going on and the cities do have a voice. Like in the natural gas, like the seasons made and the power, especially the power. Power's really interesting, all that all works, but it's pretty interesting to learn all that.
It's, it's a great networking tool for mayors and ed and all, so you believe how many communities have the same problems.
Do they have the same solution?
Uh, sometimes you find solutions and sometimes you just find worse problems.
Well, it's good to be able to go and talk to other communities your same size and find solutions for problems, so.
So looking for a motion?
Make a motion to pass resolution number six seven two.
Second.
Brian.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Karine.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Okay, number seven, discussion action approval of seasonal park employees.
So we found our third park help and it will be Kason Martins. He is the only one applied. We had, we only had two the first time around and so we re-put an application out and he applied. Uh, he's from Osmond, he goes to school here, he's a senior, so big kid for here, if you've ever seen him, he plays sports, so I think he'll be a good addition.
I make a motion to approve Kason Martins for seasonal parking point.
Second.
I'll say it, motion.
Okay, Brian.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Karine.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
After talking to Kason, I don't think he's going to come work for the city.
He's not now.
No. Um, he's gonna stay at Casey's. I think he's gonna make a little more money there.
Okay.
So I just, I'll, I'll, I wanted to share that with you guys.
Did you tell him the experience will be less?
I told him to come on, but he, he said that he's just gonna stay at Casey's, so.
Do we still want to approve this, just to?
I'm, I'm just letting you know.
I guess we still could at most.
Yeah.
He might just in case he might change his mind.
Yeah, he might.
Yep.
So a motion then?
To, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the wages for seasonal park employee.
Which is what?
Uh, eleven, like eleven dollars like everyone else, sorry.
Thank you. I'll second that.
Okay, Brian.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Karine.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Number nine, discussion action, possible purchase of property at two oh five North Pine Street.
Okay, so I spoke with you today, uh, well, she got back to her lady today, but we offered her, um, like we discussed, we have twenty-five thousand. She's willing to sell the entire property unless it sits really close to her house, she might want a couple feet back. It depends on how a lot, the survey comes out. I mean, if it's against her wall, she'd like a couple feet back from it, which I understood, I don't blame her, so she can walk around her house. And then maybe just a possible fence to block any of the lights that would be in her bedroom windows or anything. Otherwise, she, uh, she agrees to sell the entire property, so.
She's gonna move the garage?
What's that?
She gonna move the garage?
Nope, she, we tear it down. Uh, yep, uh, she said she'll rent, um, a spot for her being her little little bug to go and she thinks it's gonna be a great addition for the parking and if they get that, um, library outside reading spot, she's pretty excited about it, so. That's weird.
She doesn't want another garage built?
She, she does want my garage built.
That's also, she's gonna use the money for it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I told her, you know, by the time she signs that one, gross it, plus, plus the twenty thousand, I did off your twenty and she said she was a little over twenty-five, so I said, well, okay, we can do that just to appease her and she was, she went and talked her families last week and she confirmed today that she was happy with it, so.
It's a good purchase, I think.
I think so, I think we'll leave happy.
That's that property right there, Kyle, we're talking about.
Okay.
That ugly brown house, out of there.
So, yeah, we'll have a survey near the angle, they should be coming here and then, um, y'all get the, if you guys agree to it, I'll get all the documents to Kyle to work on, so.
I'll make a motion to purchase property two oh five North Pine Street.
Second.
Okay, Tyler.
Aye.
Karine.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
All right, great. Number ten, discussion advertised for upcoming city council opening.
This is just me. I'm, uh, looking at moving to Omaha and going more towards what I'm college for in the utility line. So I should be gone by September, but it'll probably be before that. So I'm just giving heads up, that way we can look.
I talked to Brian about it, I know, by the time we put out applications and you guys interview and appoint, it's right during budget season and excuse me, Brian doesn't have to leave if something happens, stays here. We, I mean, we don't have to, we don't, we don't have to, we're not shutting you out by any means, but that way it'll hopefully be a smooth transition for whenever he decides and he'll give Bob the time to, uh, to open up applications and look for any interest, so.
You've been on the council six years?
No, a little, two.
Two, two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. About two and a half.
Yep.
So the process is just, uh, put in the paper?
Put in the paper, open up applications. Yep, if you want to have a certain application you want to put out there, so if you want any certain information and then you can, yep, then you can interview however you want to do it.
And then you appoint and then we vote.
Yep, yep, and if you guys don't like it, then he has to go back to drawing board and bring somebody else.
We'll, we'll see how many we get, but I, I plan on interviewing everyone, no matter who it is.
Yeah.
And then say if there's five, I may pick two or three, have a personnel committee come in and help, you know, we'll all interview them then, so it's more of a group thing.
Okay.
So a whole person, good candidates.
You want a motion to advertise for council, city council opening?
Do we need a motion?
I don't, I don't think we need a motion, just so people know.
They said this discussion.
Yeah, because if, if something happens and he decides, say, he loves his neighbor next to him and he's gonna stay here, we won't have to worry about it.
But thanks for the heads up too, Brian, so we can make it work.
Good luck to you when you do go to Omaha.
Yeah.
He first told me he might, if I had you, he'd resign. May I say, please don't. Just wait, yeah. We need him.
Okay, number eleven, discussion city of Plaineview, possible water rate increase.
Okay, so this, we're not gonna get in depth for this today, this is giving me very high level. Um, essentially, we know that we're gonna start testing for water outside of town, looking for a new well source. That's been projected to be around anywhere from five and a half to six million dollars. Um, so I contacted Brad Slaughter, who is our bond agent, and I just wanted to pass out what a six million dollar bond looks like over twenty years, just so we can start thinking about it and let people know that obviously we don't have this money on hand and it won't be coming out of thin air. Um, there is some different options which we could look into, which is rates for one, obviously water rates help pay for these coming down the road. And then he also said that we can also, oh, he saw you flip over.
Thank you.
A general obligation bond, which is through our taxes, and he would come down and he would actually explain how, how we can do that through levying an extra tax that the council can choose to do. So this is kind of just to get your guys' wheels turning and thinking about ways to come up with, you know, like annual debt service, we're looking at four hundred and seventy thousand, so ways of coming up with a price like that. Or if anybody has any different ideas, fundraisers, cookie bake sale, I mean, anything.
Let's do a bake sale every day.
We're, we're in it, yeah.
I'll be happy, though.
Don't make it a cake walk.
Oh, and disclaimer from pilot saying, no, this is not, this is completely just estimates. They are not saying that this is what the interest rate will be. Um, this is just something I asked them, they would have looked like. Um, interest rates could obviously go up or down depending on the exact time. And they don't recommend any of this, this is just what they, uh, provide for information.
So just, does the rates always go up towards the end so I get one enough money?
What's that?
Does it always go up as it gets paid off? Kind of seems backwards to me, but.
Well, no, because of smaller amounts, so more interest.
Ah, yeah, so instead of getting the money, that's right, then you agree with me.
I don't know if it always does that, that'd be a question for Brad and the.
And you don't know whether you can prepay at this point, because, you know, I'm sure we're not.
Prepay?
You got six million dollars, please.
I didn't know, you were so generous, Karine.
We could have four hundred and fifty dollars more every month than we could, we were spending.
Yeah, we'll start prepaying that today, because we'll see what we get on.
We need some playground equipment.
But he'll have to tell us that.
Yeah, so he'll tell you all that, um, I'll have him come in when it comes closer, we know more about it, but I kind of want you guys to think about it, it's coming up to budget season. Um, obviously, we'll, we'll probably need to do a water increase to start getting ahead of it, so we're not taking such a big jump when it finally goes through. And then, um, if we do want to levy some tax for it, we have that option and he'll explain how all that works. So like I said, this is very, just, just so the public starts to know that things are coming down the road, um, and that we are gonna have an expense and a debt on our hands, so. Yeah.
And this is based on a twenty-year note?
Yep, and we can change years to be shorter, I mean, we can go through all that, so. That's what, I mean, essentially, what we're looking at is over nine, nine million dollars when you get down, yeah, nine point three, so it's definitely not cheating. So four hundred and fifty dollars a month, we wouldn't away at no time.
Well, you never know.
That's, that's all I have on that one. We won't go in in depth there.
Okay, moving on to number twelve, discussion budgets.
Um, all right, this is another topic of mine, yeah, and this is, yet again, we're not gonna go in depth on it, um, for some reason, out of the million dollar budget, we always fall on wages. Um, the big thing that's happened to wages, if people haven't been following, is minimum wage is gonna be going up and by twenty twenty-six, it's gonna be fifteen dollars. You can look at it many different ways, how, how are we gonna track our employees? Because essentially, if we, if we keep them at a normal three to four to five percent increase, obviously, the difference is gonna climb, you know, because they're not gonna go up as much as a dollar fifty every year as minimum wage. Um, so you can look at it like that and you can just, and what I'm trying to get is, I don't want anybody to make decisions or anything, but I want you guys to start thinking about it, so when we talk about it, we have ideas, we know what's coming. Um, I have some paperwork just to show and these are just some random numbers. This is just if, if minimum wage was at nine dollars and then if a current wage was at eighteen dollars, what someone would like, would, would look at for the scale of that wage. Like I said, you could use any dollar figure, I just pulled this out, so. Um, the first ones, if you want three percent, obviously, you can see how it grows, eighteen, eighteen fifty-four, nineteen one, and so that, by twenty twenty-six, there's roughly only gonna be a five dollar and twenty-six cents difference where they started out at nine. Um, the middle one is if you kept them at a two hundred percent difference, so nine and eighteen dollars obviously would grow dramatically to, to thirty dollars an hour, which, and I'm not recommending any of these, these are just samples out there. And then, um, the bottom one, it'd be if it went up, if their wages went up the same amount as what minimum wage went up, which is a dollar fifty. So, and you can see on the side the percent difference between the gap and then the actual percentage on the side, so I guess really have to think about, we won't know, is how the economy is gonna go. Obviously, I don't foresee every, all the goods to go up equivalent. Some of them will, obviously, our grocery stores and everything will have to hit all those prices and things will go up. Um, we know obviously our utilities will be going up, but I'm sure nationwide, it won't happen because this is a Nebraska thing, not a national thing, so it, it's not obviously gonna go up a hundred percent with it, so. Um, let's just be thinking about it. I've been trying to do some research and see what other companies have been thinking about. Um, I haven't heard much back from it yet, but I will be reaching out to other communities and seeing what, what we're thinking for, they're gonna do. Assuming, I would suggest this right now off the cuff, is we, we'd be better off slow planning and seeing what goes on down the road, but this is just, uh, some food for thought for when we begin the budget season, because here, next month or two, we'll definitely start getting more numbers and more projects. Um, and if we have anything that we think we want to do as a community other than paving coming up, which is five hundred some thousand dollars, which we'll be doing assessments for in the fall, and then the water is six million or five and a half. I mean, if you want to keep adding to it, I know how you like to spend money, Tyler, and, uh, so that's what we set up, that's all I was going to say, yep.
So think about it.
Yeah.
And minimum wage is going up to fifteen, it is, right?
Yep, a dollar fifty every year. Yep, it already, it already started this January.
It's ten fifty right now.
Yep.
So. Bomb it out the basement. As long as you can.
Too late, Tyler, it's too late.
I know.
Wow, so.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Jeremy.
Yeah, and like I said, that, those are just random numbers for waiting, but that's, that is just for easy math. I mean, because it's, it's really hard to think about if somebody had a nine dollar difference starting out with and then if you have a nine dollar difference, you know, five years down the road, or if you do it by percentages, what numbers really look like? There's a heck of a spread in there.
Yes, sir.
Because essentially, you're saying the dollar fifty across the board makes everybody go up the same.
Equivalent, yep, yep. You would keep, essentially, if you went by percentage difference, you'd actually be losing money, because obviously, as that, that bottom number grows, you're gonna stay at the nine dollar difference, but if your dollar's worth the same, you'll be able to buy, your buying power should be. I'm not a economist, but hopefully.
Okay, number thirteen, council comments. Moving on to council, who should come?
Have you met Karine yet, Kyle?
Well, I just, um, I'm glad that the lib, that we're gonna do that because I think that will help the library a lot. Sophie, we, we don't know who Sophie is yet, do we? Who, on the library, does anyone know who Sophie is?
No, I asked for clarification and I forgot her last name, so.
I mean, it's a nice name, so I'm sure she's a nice girl.
It's, um, Brooke's employee's daughter.
Brooke who?
Oh, it's Smith.
Oh, Sophie Smith, okay.
Mary's daughter?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I asked them, they said they needed to clarify that in their meeting minutes.
Apparently, they've been helping.
Might not have the same name or something.
They're doing volunteer work or something up here.
Okay, well, that'd be okay.
She's a nice girl.
Yeah, so I thought it was very nice that they received a five hundred donation to the Lego club from the Brandon Garrett, Garedis, how you pronounce it?
Gertis.
Memorial, I thought that was very nice of them to do, and, um, we talked, that, we've talked before about the landscape, you know, and it was done in memory of Judy Ossmussen. And some guy came and, now, did we know for sure that they're gonna take all these other natural looking plants out and redo them?
The foundation and the library board are gonna get together May?
Twenty-five.
Yep, twenty-five and we're coming.
Do you think by the five o'clock is the hottest part of the day, should not be doing plants at that time?
You'd have to tell them.
Yeah, well, as long as they do it, I don't care.
We've got a long ways to go, eleven fifteens.
We gotta go, we gotta go eleven sixteen.
I forgot something.
No.
Um, the minutes that I keep, the, the logs that I give you from our dispatch. God, it's been a fight. I will tell you that they have not been logging even Pierce PD's calls. So you're gonna see probably eleven calls on there that's a hundred percent inaccurate. Um, I had a conversation with Alicia, she's the office manager, saying that every call we get needs to be created into an incident so that you guys can see that we, the hours that we're putting in are legit.
Yeah.
And, and I'm not gonna cheat the system, you guys, I'm, I'm out there working, so you, I just want you to know that, um. But I'm gonna have a meeting with Alicia next week and they are down a dispatcher, she got into a really bad car accident and is in, what's that play? Madonna. She can't feel her legs right now, so they're down a dispatcher and be down another one for a while. So our call logs are gonna probably look very sparse, but I promise you that we're out there working. I don't want you to let that reflect on the stuff that we're doing, because that, that's not a hundred percent accurate. So if you have, it, like you said, if you have questions, feel free to, to ask and I'll let you know, but.
Have you painted your office yet?
No, we need to get it done. I got the paint.
Yeah, I saw you got it.
Have you seen how clean that office is now, by the way?
I have been smelling it.
Smells good, too.
Good.
Doesn't smell like part of smoke. Oh, shh.
Kyle's not coming back to his meeting, by the way. He'd rather not, he'd rather not attend the meeting.
Oh, you want to, you hope it stays on so long, don't you? No, I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify that with you guys, that the, the CAD, the log is not reflecting accurate calls, so. We're paying for that service, so I'm gonna make sure we get that freaking service, just so you know.
I also, I want to say, so the park kids, I understand William is the one that mowed this, the memorial cemetery, it's probably as well done as anybody has done so far. Whoever you've seen, please tell him that. And the transfer station on May sixth was not well attended, right?
We had. Is that not Saturday?
Mm-hmm.
Most of them, most of them were out of town, though. So not a lot of locals. It's fine.
Yeah, because we have trucks from out of town, that's how they know about it, they do that.
It was advertised.
We advertised well, so people in the community didn't partake.
Like we hoped they would.
Yeah, that's why we have nuisances, isn't that how I guess?
That's all right.
Yep, we'll start.
And do you have your new air conditioner yet in the, in the office?
We have it.